One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
First thing I want to announce is that the city council held an executive session on May 22nd to discuss the police contract. Second thing I want to announce is that city council will immediately following this hold a executive session to discuss personnel. Before I have the approval of the minutes, is there any public comment on any agenda items that sit before us? Yes, sir.
I have a question on, one that isn't on, is there any updates on the Second Amendment resolution?
That would be under discussion, sir.
Alright.
Let's take care of the agenda first, thank you. Okay, need approval of the minutes. Alright, we have everybody, if you can see the Highlight, Fire Department, Police Department, Engineer Code Office, Planning Commission, Public Works.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes. Jamie's here?
I'm here.
There you are.
Dr. Go, my partner.
We'll turn it over for the 2013 project reviewing selection.
Good evening, how are you? As you know, there were fourteen projects discussed for funding with the 2013 CDVG grant, which still to date do not have an application time for allocation. However, we are moving forward under the estimation that the city will receive the usual $300,000 of CDVG funds because according to Act 179, cities are entitled to get no less than $300,000 each year. Four projects were discussed at a meeting on May 6th with the members of council that were able to be there for selection for this year out of those fourteen. One being demolition of lighted properties as usual at thirty percent of your funds after admin, which is around $73,000. Second is the Oppenheimer Pleasure Grounds basketball court improvements, around $33,660. The Sunbury Fire Department, $42,000 towards the purchase of a ladder truck. And Chestnut Street reconstruction at $97,340 to add to the $181,880.33 already allocated to that project in 2011 and 2012. Those are the projects that I am suggesting that you select for 2013 funding. If you'd like, we can discuss any of the other of the fourteen on the list. We've been over them before, so I didn't think we needed to go over all of them again. But it is up to you if you have any questions or want me to discuss any of them before taking action to select your 2013 project.
Well, like I said, we've met a couple times, I know everybody had the opportunity to discuss them.
Correct, yeah, everybody had the opportunity either by email or to call or attend a meeting to discuss them. The final public hearing could be the final step of the process will be probably your next meeting on the 24th, is that it? If you're comfortable with these four projects as outlined in front of you, you would make a motion to select those projects for 2013 funding.
Miss DeMannion?
I'll say it.
Yeah, is, well, just for the heck of it, is there any discussion of these specific things, everybody aware, can you pick up what Jamie said there? Okay, like I said, we talked about these in other meetings.
And at the final public hearing at the next meeting, there's also time for public comment during that public hearing, so.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, good job.
Thank you.
Anybody hear an SRI update?
Uh, yeah. First up, I would like to announce that Sunbury's having a summer concert series. June 29th, we have Ann Kirkstetter. July 20th, we have Nate Myers and the Aces. And August, we have River Festival. We have five additional SRI memberships that joined in the last month. And we are currently working on the Keystone Communities' application for designation and the deadline will be June 30th. Also, we have hometown veteran banners. We are asking for four more and we will rehang, or we will hang ten banners, that's our minimum requirement. So if you're interested in a veteran banner this year, please contact the SRI office. And the Hill neighborhood will be attending the Rain Barrel Workshop, which we received grant money for tomorrow afternoon.
Can I ask you how many total banners there were? There are?
There were seventy-four.
Well, I just want to mention that, but for the moral degree, that was, that was just beautiful downtown, it really was, everybody got a chance to get down there. It's just amazing how, you know, they just make everything stand out, and I just believe it just adds a little bit to the ceremony. Redevelopment Authority update. They met last, Redevelopment Authority met last Thursday. There are two properties that are going to be advertised, one up for sale, one on Miller Street, a vacant lot, and a Seventh Street property. And you'll, you'll hear more about them in the very near future, the way they're going to be bid is with proposals. That was, people are going to buy them, not just buy them for empty lots, they have to buy them and have them, then they will present a proposal as to what they're going to do with the property. Redevelopment Authority will go through that then and recommend if, for council, if we should sell it or not, that's how we're going to do that. So we pretty much, when we sell a piece of property now, an empty property, or a property that needs torn down, and maybe those people, they'll have restrictions on how that's going to come down, what's going to be there, so we'll know all that upfront. So it should help people in the neighborhood know what's going on and give everybody some timelines as to when it has to happen. Any questions, Redevelopment Authority? The, I want to mention one other thing, I know Jim's working on the Julia Street and the Wise Warehouse property there on Raspberry Avenue. Hope to be getting them down in the very near future also, those are both, they're definitely coming down, both of those properties. And the unfinished business, other than the police contract, police contract. Have anybody seen copies of the police contract? Pass them down, not that we're going to read the police contract, but.
That's how we're going to work.
Pretty much, Mike, you can recap it, I know the big thing that most people are concerned about is the, the first year of the police contract, which of course is 2013, which is near, was half gone. There is no salary increase, there is an increase in longevity. 2014 and 2015, it amounts to 2.5 percent, so salary wise, that's what the salaries came up to. What else do you want to?
I, nothing to add, I know that council is spending their money, asks questions, the officers have too, the officers are here this evening, but I think that it's right for a vote.
So what do we do, we vote on and then send it down, and then they argue either approve it, or what we vote on is the, they still have the.
No, they have the option to go back and approve it.
Okay. But I think we're getting a nod in the back that we vote, you vote, and it's good to go, is that a thumbs up?
Certainly hope so. Yeah, we're going back and forth enough to get, to get down to where we, we don't anticipate a problem.
Todd, I want to thank you for all the time you spent on the contract, putting the numbers, that was a critical part.
Just on the future, do you want to stay in particular, you want to say anything about it?
No, actually, I think it's good all around. I think everyone should be thankful to reach this point and happy with the results.
Let me first thank the police department for working half a year without a contract.
We're here, we're here for you!
And for free, it's. Well, I want to make the motion that we accept the police contract for 2013, 14, and 15.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Snyder? Bartella?
Yes.
Okay, and the new business, there's a resolution, and this is budgeted, we, we buy our cars by, over three years, what we do, we budget like 12,000 for the, for the lease agreements, and then we pay them off in three years, so. I, I have a resolution to purchase our new car, which was in the budget. The resolution is for the city of Sunbury approves a borrowing of $36,950 from the Thumber National Bank, who was a low bidder, did we get that out? Yep. And authorized Terry to sign it, and this is, like I say, this, the money's budgeted in there, we just have to do this to get the front, the loan to buy the car. So I make that form of motion, I need a second.
Question?
Sir.
What kind of vehicle are you buying?
Ford.
Ford Corus, the newer subject.
Do it too.
With a better engine, see if we can get there again.
Thanks. I'll say it again.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
She cuts down through that uniform bidding program.
The Cosarm program to the state.
And, and not to change the subject, but I was with a police officer on East Buffalo Township one Saturday, and they have Dodges up there, I was looking at them, so, remember one of our local people asked us about that?
Yes.
And the Dodgers, they have those heavy engines in them, but they're all rear wheel drive, which caught me by surprise, I guess you have to have that size engine in them, but they didn't think they were very good in the wintertime.
These, these should be front wheel drive, they should be, or all wheel drive, we should be good for the wintertime. This has the Goo4 Echo Boost V6, and hopefully that'll decrease our gas usage.
Uh, Joe, Harv approval?
Um, yes, we have a request for a certificate of appropriateness for Ford 25, Market Street, for Greg Nodich. It's for a complete removal of the sod and existing storefront, they're going to be installing new insulated glass on it. It's going to look pretty much the same except just with an awning out over with a panel from some forests. And they're going to restore the sign. And everybody, everybody in the Harv approval, and I guess the planning commission are all prepared for this, I recommend that we make a motion that we accept and provide them with a certificate of appropriateness.
Jamie? Need a second?
Second.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
We have, or on Harv, we have, we still need a person on that board, how many of you want that, five? How many are on that, Joe?
Ninety-seven.
Somebody got off.
Adam Hurries.
So anyway, if you can think of somebody, maybe the next meeting you recommend. Point Vegas Zoning Hearing Board, there's an opening there, late nominee, Jesse Woodman.
He's the alternate now, so we'll now, we'll.
Oh, okay, he's over, he's not going off of it then?
Well, he, he's not actually on it, he's the alternate. Unless there's somebody not there.
But does he want to be?
Yes.
The full-time person?
Kind of don't have a vote on it, but I guess he can.
Sorry?
Yeah, we should.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
So now we'll have an opening for a, so any hearing board, alternate, so add that, everybody add that to your list, it's a Harv person.
Who stepped down on the zoning hearing?
John Teicher is moving out.
In the United States, I think. Approval of pay invoice is Todd.
I'd like approval, please, to pay outstanding payables in the amount of $71,044.12 from the general fund.
I'll say it again.
Thank you, Governor.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Taxes on ouration, Todd.
Again, your report packages, there's requests for a toneration of taxes report, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the requests of the individuals listed for the amount shown and the reasons given.
Seven.
Trup? Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Snyder? Bartella?
Yes.
Discussion. Anybody have anything you want to discuss? Oh, let's go through the agenda, items first. Edison Enterprises slash serve food and alcohol on site, Brad here? Yeah, yes you are. How you doing?
So, Window World, well, we want to expand to the former Window World building and former Tony's tuxedos. There's room in both locations where you can have a table or two on the sidewalk to serve food and alcohol. Now, we're just getting into the initial phase of planning, but we have to file with the LCB for expansion premises. And whenever that involves a sidewalk, you have to have permission from the local municipality. So I'm just here to get permission, hopefully.
It's pretty much the same thing we did in the past, McQuiggin's and probably.
And I understand five-foot egress and all the other rules associated with such, and they'll be followed.
Brad, I think you're doing a nice job up there.
I appreciate that, Jim.
Met some folks in there the other day from Balfont, he said it was a delicious crab cake.
Great, I'll pass it on to the kitchen.
Any questions? I'll make that form of motion.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Great, thanks a lot, guys, appreciate it.
Do you need a ladder for us?
I do need a ladder.
618 Reagan Street, convert to efficiency apartment.
It's actually, somebody's supposed to be here about it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry ma'am, go ahead. Just identify yourself.
I mean, is it that, and I have an apartment building on Reagan Street, which I have a beauty shop, and I talked to Joe about turning it into an efficiency apartment, and it seems like all the zoning was good, I just needed to present it to the city of Sunbury.
Okay, so you're looking at a current commercial property that you want to convert into a rental property for residential use.
It's a, it's a rental property, I have two apartments.
It's a mixed use, actually. There's been apartments there for years, and she had a use along down below, and she'd like to make that into a efficiency.
So this comes to us this evening because of the expansion of rental apartments.
Right. And she does meet the requirements for the square footage.
Got all street parking?
And all street parking laws, actually.
By this, Joe, I guess we do it. Code together?
Well, yeah, you guys.
It could only be done with the approval of council, according to our ordinance.
This was the ordinance of several years ago, where first we limited rentals, and then we put a case-by-case review by council, and that's the case you're at tonight.
So Joe, it was a rental prior, but it was a beauty shop rental.
This rental's.
Correct.
Is there a rental there right now? There is another rental there right now, right?
Yes.
Just adding to the rental permit, she already has the permit, all that stuff for the rentals that are already.
The ones that are there, yes, she's wanting to, you know, get the new, she meets the fast track a few guys, okay, the council.
618.
It's horrible.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Well, I'll make a motion, need a second?
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Street sweeping tickets on North Third Street, Laura Johnson here? Bear with us one second for the training.
I am, I am, it's not for that. I'm just asking that the signs be changed from 1:00 AM to 3:00 AM. Street sweeping is on Tuesday mornings, our business is open until 2:30. Our bartender is a female, and she parks in the first slot by McQuiggin's. And I, we've, I've watched the cameras now for a couple weeks, and on our cameras, the sweet streetper has never gone past before 4:11 AM. So I'm just asking because our patrons and our bartenders are getting ticketed, $20 for parking on the, the thing there. Now, I don't know if they're having problems on the other end of the street by the Eagles and Laughters and stuff and the number ones, I don't know. But I know we're having a problem, Jim knows about it, and, you know, we've talked to people about it, but they keep saying unless the sign's changed, so.
The sign says right now since 1:00?
1:00 AM.
Thought we changed that to 2:00 AM last year, so, we discussed this a year or so ago, folks?
Yep, it still says 1:00 AM.
I think we've done, I think you guys have done.
Are we just doing the Harv Street alone?
Yeah, I think, I think Harv Street itself is, is two, I think we've talked about that part that just.
She's talking about Third Street, right?
Yeah.
What time is your last call?
Um, 2:00. They can be in there till 2:30, and then till our bartender cleans up and stuff, it's like quarter to 3:00, 3:00 till they get out.
We should probably.
Since you're saying that you, we don't go by there 4:00, I like to see that happening, like, correct.
Yeah.
Because the streets are, that's always last to get. I, I don't see a problem, we can change that to 3:00, so we just make little stickers and put them over that 1:00 block, where it's maybe convenient.
Make it for the whole street?
Make it for Third Street, yeah, and, what's the parking lot set, Mike, do you know? Any time for them?
Mr. Bennett? Well, we do the enforcement of it, we do all the side streets, and then we come back and we do, we start at 1:00, we do all the side streets. And then we come back and we do Market Street, because that gives us till 2:00. But the parking lots are not done, they're only done on Fridays twice a month. So the parking lots are available, Market Street's available. I mean, we're talking about one block that you're going to switch to another time, which we're requiring officers to start at 1:00, 2:00, and then 3:00, trying to get the enforcement of it. And the pattern that we run.
I don't know, where's the parking lot set, 2:00?
The parking lots are only done twice a month.
Twice a month.
On Fridays. The second and fourth.
But Steve, the situation is the, the bar may park up front because of safety issues.
But that's on Market Street, that's not till 2:00 then?
No, but actually, I think she parks in the third.
She parks on Third, the first slot on Third.
First on Third. Okay, Al, give us an answer.
We're saying the way that we do the enforcement, we do the enforcement by driving this way, driving this way, to get the city done. So now what you're going to do is come back up, you're coming up Race Street, then you're going to stop, you're not going to do that block, then you're going to have to come back two hours later in order to get that block later on. I mean, there's a pattern in the way it's done for enforcement.
Or we got this way, Steve, we have two, we have two businesses on that street, we have Eagles and we have McQuiggin's, they're pretty busy.
Eagles, Eagles, that street's clear, the same thing that they do down at, when they see the car come down at Laughters, they get their cars out and put them over in the number one's parking lot.
But the establishment legally can be open till 2:30.
They, 2:00, clubs can be open till 3:00, they can serve till 3:00. They can serve till 2:00, clubs can serve till 3:00.
Okay, but they, they can, the airbus can be out by 2:30.
Yeah.
He's serving until 2:00, but he's, they have a hard race to finish the last drink. So theoretically, they're open till 2:30. Lori, am I right?
Yes. Yep.
So.
One night.
I can appreciate that.
That they can, if they pull around to front, by Market Street, or in the number, or the parking lot there by the.
What time's do we do Third Street? Good morning.
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday mornings.
Maybe we should better sit down with the place, let's, do we need to pass it right now?
For those areas that we had designated within the downtown, something Entertainment District, remember if you got some.
Right.
We voted on that, Third Street's part of that. Those areas.
I think it was just on Market Street, I think we changed last year.
We talked about.
Just thinking maybe part of that same conversation, think through the police departments, all we sent them, think through whether or not police sense to connect that.
Tell them what I know, Lori, I'll sit down with Chief and, and Mike, we'll come up with a solution for you.
Yeah, I don't want to cause any problems or anything, I'm just, you know, our patrons are getting ticketed, and my bartender's getting ticketed, so.
Can't you be the bartender of permanent, aren't there?
That's what it was just. Yeah, well, but your employees, it's the people, it's your patrons too, isn't it?
Patrons can still be cited too, they can cite it because.
Right.
2:00, we, you know, here's the establishment, it's open for business, and we don't want to take a hand with your patron because.
We'll have something for the, for the, in two weeks.
Alright.
David, they don't make sure they're not taken for the next two weeks, we come up with an answer.
He has an opening. Well, yeah, I can't spell the enforcement. I, I would suggest tell, tell your, your patrons to, that we're looking at the sign for now, and we're trying to get it, you know, we're, we're just seriously looking to see what we can change.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We'll have something for the 24th.
Alright.
Okay, any public comment? In the very back, please.
Which one?
Young lady right there.
My name is Megan Beck, I'm here on behalf of the Old Town Committee, and I just wanted to ask the city if they could, if there's anything that they can do to help us promote bicycle safety in the downtown and also use of bicycles downtown. Just in general, we want to promote pedestrian and bicycle use to help support the businesses downtown. We've noticed that there aren't very many places to park bicycles, and perhaps the bicycle racks might be helpful in places such as Edison Plaza, next to the Dollar General store, and perhaps a couple other strategic places downtown. Runners' Roust has offered to sell them to the city at cost, so if there's any way that the city can help with that, or if there's any other ideas you might have, we appreciate them.
What are we supposed to do at the intersection if we have no bicycles and skateboards painted on the sidewalk?
Well, that's, I guess that's, that's another question too, you know.
That's a big question.
I mean, they aren't supposed to be, like, I guess, on the sidewalks, and they're actually supposed to be able to use the street, but as traditional with the cars, but, you know, there's, we still need a place to park them, you know, and we still, just like cars need a place to park, so.
See, in years past, we had an issue with trying to get where people could walk downtown, and especially with the high-rise, a lot of the elderly had a problem, well, not, well, everybody had a problem, because people with bicycles would just come flying through there.
I mean, the bicycle.
You may want to, same conversation?
Yes. Bicycles illegally, supposed to be on the road, not sidewalk, so if somebody on the sidewalk.
You're right, you bought it.
Police enforcement.
So we still enforce you, you're not talking about putting them on the streets? You're not talking about putting bikes on the sidewalk?
Well, someone, they would walk.
No, other than, like, allowing for parking for bikes, you know, like, either bicycle racks, or maybe, you know, something on parking meters or something that would promote, you know, this is where you can park your bike safely. So that's, it was just a conversation we've been having this week on June 12th, is it 6:30 today?
Yes.
6:30, there will be a community bike drive starting at the ice rink parking lot, so any, any, the entire community is welcome to attend that, just in support of bicycling the community.
What was that?
Um, June 12th, at 6:30, at the ice rink. And everyone's welcome to attend.
Where does the ride go to?
Dennis?
We're just going to do like a fake figure eight around town, we have squeeze-in, and hers offering a discounted show on bike that night, and just to try to promote biking, raise some awareness for bikes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be a fun time.
Can I ask your name, Joe?
Dennis Marquette.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you very much. No, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ross.
Yes, my name's Preston Ross. I came this evening to speak on the article that was in the newspaper about the code office, and our code officers. I'm a lifelong resident of this town, I own property in this town, and I was in this town when the first code officer was hired in the city of Sunbury. I believe David Atine was here. I also did some work for the code office at that particular time, as kind of a relief code officer because there wasn't enough people to go around and inspect the rental properties. I've worked with many other code officers in a lot of communities in my lifetime, and I will say this, this is not a solicited from anybody, it's strictly from him. I've worked with Joe and I've worked with Mike for a lot of years already. There's been different times when Mike and Joe have come to me for my opinion on something, I have gone with them, I've gone to court with them. I find that those two men do one excellent job for the city of Sunbury. I am proud to call them my friends. Code enforcement is a set of rules and regulations. What administers code is common sense. These two gentlemen have common sense. I support them and I back them. I think they're doing a fantastic job for this city. Thank yous.
Well, Miller and I echo Preston's remarks. They're doing a terrific job, and I had a lot of the bottom of the vote on them, and I call them my friends.
Thank you. Somebody else have your hand, let me, did you have your hand up?
I just want to ask a question. They did all that work down at the riverfront, and there was no bathrooms put in. Why? For that, for that music thing they had down there the other weekend, everybody was looking for bathrooms, and there was nothing. No porta potty, no nothing was there. There was no porta potty there.
What is that, what is that?
There was guessing plays and all that, and there was other two bands played down there.
I don't know where you were at, I was four up, I'm right where they were sitting, and I helped unload them.
Where were they sitting?
Two to the north and two to the south, and.
Well, we walked in, up over the hill, we didn't see any, and.
Right past two up, left hand side.
Because there was numerous peoples, people that asked where the bathrooms were, and everybody kept saying they didn't know. Okay, well, nobody could find them.
Not luck for porta potty, that's, that's what.
Nobody could find them.
Put a little light on top of them, that's all.
Okay, yes ma'am.
I just wondered, what I'd update on our.
Please identify yourself.
Cam doc. Update on our cameras, do we have them yet?
On our what?
Cameras, the city.
The cameras, the wiring is run at the Fort Discovery, so they'll be installed very, very nearly, and the next step is the, is the riverfront in south, and we're working with, as soon as, we're working with the municipal authority to get that set up. So the next ones you'll see will be along the riverfront, and I would assume maybe by the next, by the next meeting, we can, if you wanna go up and look at what's been done up at Fort Discovery, but there, that's all the conduits we're running, the wires are running. And we're getting top before he disappears or resolves.
How'd you guys make it out? Which one, Mike?
Fantastic. I mean, obviously moved quickly, and did a fantastic job getting it into a fast and correct, so.
He'll be an expert, by the way. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carmen Campbell, and I'm on Cadwell's Avenue. I was wondering if you got in touch with the I H N, for the picture, have you done anything?
I've been in touch, but I have not done anything.
It's gonna die before you do.
We need to get somebody else on it, because I'm so busy that I just can't get downstairs to look at it. He said that he would re-touch them, well, clean them, first of all, and frame some of them.
We'll get them, we'll get them together.
How many pictures are there, Terry?
A lot, a lot.
Are they all downstairs in one room?
Yeah, they should be.
Does she know what picture she wants?
That's part of the problem, I don't know what picture. Why don't you come down someday?
I will help her, I will, I will do that if you want.
Thank you, that'd be great.
I will.
You can just pick out the one.
Yeah, and we'll pick out which ones to take first.
The young lady behind you, help you, separate them, then we'll get them down there.
Just let me know.
Okay.
Terry has my number.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll plan it.
I just love when a plan comes together.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment. I'm Dave Wood from Edison Avenue. I know that our police has been busy as far as activism. You guys had Sunbury sidewalk sales this past week, not sidewalk, we.
Not saying it's.
The speeding in town was horrible on Susquehanna Avenue. People were, were actually hollering at people slowing down, and they were well at the speed. I don't know what we can do to slow people down, but we need to do something, either that or raise the speed limit to 85. More customary than what they did. They do not do 25 mile per hour. They do not stop, we stopped trying to stay in Sunbury.
Well, click it, okay, we'll take it in the.
So I'm just not making that comment, we observed it, it wasn't only myself, so we can speed. It was all right, and they could downstreet turn around, right back up faster, went down the corner.
And did you call? Did anybody call?
We did not call.
Okay, then please call, okay? With all due respect, I, you guys worked, and they were both busy, if they didn't get down, with all due respect, sir, if they didn't get down there, please call, because if they don't know the problem.
I did say, though, you guys are busy.
And that's the issue, is they are busy. But if there's a problem, please call. So then we still know there's an issue there, and when they get free, they can deal with it. Thank you.
We don't have enough to get everywhere, but we'll do our darlings to get there.
And I understand.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to comment on the memorandum of understanding that was discussed a little bit last meeting. A letter's been sent from Northumberland County Conservation District in regard to the MOA, and I'll just read a very short part of it. It does, what I'm going to read does put the onus on Sunbury. It's incorrect, and incorrectly stated here in council, that now they're in charge, and I will read that portion to you. These are land development and subdivision codes of the city of Sunbury and not the county of Northumberland. As such, the duty to enforce the same lies with the city. The county of Northumberland has a subdivision and land development ordinance, which the county enforces where a municipal ordinance is not in effect. Therefore, the onus is on Sunbury, the city of Sunbury cannot and has not ceded its power or authority to enforce your code. And because of the discussion last time in council concerning the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, this May 31, 2013 letter from the Conservation District should serve for Francis to correct that issue in the daily item, there was a rather lengthy article concerning that. So the city does need to enforce their code, specifically 175-1520, dealing with the development that may endanger human life, 175-13, violations and penalties, and specifically 143-7. So it is still my position and contention that the city is responsible for enforcing those codes. Thank you.
Okay. There was somebody who saw you, had your hand there? Yes, sir, or ma'am, I'm sorry, I can't see. I saw a hand, that's all.
Hi, hi, here's Regina Russell. I was wondering if the council would consider putting up signs for noise ordinance, I believe you have an ordinance for noise, and if signs could go up around town. I've been here several years now, and a lot of the residents, homeowners, tenants, don't seem to be aware of this ordinance, no matter how many times you might print it. I know, they don't care, but it, maybe it can be enforced more if there were signs up. And I am on Walnut and South Fourth Street, right across from K and D's. So I am hearing a lot of noise and partying after 12 o'clock, and their lights are still on until sometimes 2:00 AM in the mornings. I'm asking for consideration.
Okay, well, how do we put that on a sign? The whole ordinance, or just?
Well, usually you would put that there's some sort of noise ordinance and the time between such and such a time, just like you might say, trucks are not allowed down a specific street between 7:00 AM and 9:30 AM.
Okay, we'll take your guys' comment.
Thank you. I have a couple of more things, please, ma'am. Also, I was curious, and I'm sure I overlooked it, not that I'm on top of everything, but what was the name of the company the council issued the contract to for installing the cameras?
We didn't.
You didn't?
We were installing cameras.
The city of Sunbury?
Correct, there was only a contract to purchase the cameras, not actually to install them.
Okay, thank you. And regarding the civil servants, and that would be anybody working for the city, including council, I believe, I will agree with most of the people that our inspectors have done and are doing a good job, and that's to include Linda Danley, who is the administrator in that office. I have never been disrespected, and I appreciate that very much. And most of my complaints get taken care of, but I still have to come back to what brought me here. In a crazy mood, was dealing with Councilman Aister's property and the tenant that he has there, that still seems to be allowed to park trucks there with trash. If you go there now, you have wood panels, which you're gonna say is on the sidewalk, within his five feet of walking, but there's five feet wood panels there stacked up against the garage door. I've made complaints to the point where I have a three-page report from January through April 17th, where there have been more than 15 calls made for that property with the same complaint, and something is wrong that that gentleman can still be allowed to do that, that he's not getting fined. It's something that's happening that allows him to ignore the inspectors if they are going there, and they are, because I questioned my neighbors, and they have actually witnessed Joe speaking to this gentleman about leaving his trash parked on the sidewalk. So I am addressing that again, and hope that maybe more than Councilman Bartello can help with that situation. Thank you.
Yes.
How is the city responding to the threat that was made to our officers last week?
The police department is on top of that.
Meaning?
What's common sense with me, the police department is well aware of it, chief has it under control, and so do the policemen, so we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Do you not think that maybe we should be hiring a detective and a drug enforcement officer to help along the lines with that?
We need to get people on the streets right now, necessarily a detective. We need to get more officers on the street, we hope you get the three back that we lost ASAP.
So they'll be full-time?
The people over there now?
The people that you're looking to get back? You said three officers?
Just freak people off right now, if that you do to that situation you had a couple weeks ago. We need to get them back as soon as we can.
Are there gonna be additional officers hired?
There wouldn't be any additional officers hired until next budget year. There'd be no money to buy it to hire new officers, if that's what you're referring to. We would have to look into part-time if these guys are gonna be off for a real long time. Sir?
I'd like to address, address an issue again that I've addressed with Mike and Joe, about the property next door to me. I'm Gene Swon, I live on Paul Street. The tenant next door has this outdoor wood burning receptacle, Jill and Mike are aware of it, and they claim that it's legal, okay? Although there is no open burning allowed in the city of Sunbury, this guy insists on burning wood. Okay? Now, I installed a wood burner in my house, I had to go so high with the chimney to make it leak. Yet this receptacle that this fellow has next to me is only eight feet tall, the chimney, the pipe. Therefore, during the summer, you know what happens? People have their windows open, air conditioners, fans, all this smoke and smell is going into the homes. So I have an article here from the, from the code here, it says, "It is generally recognized that the pipes of fuel used and the scale and duration of burning by outdoor wood burning furnaces." Now, this is the wood burning furnaces you see out in the country that the people used to, that's what this.
Like a little houses type thing.
That's what they're referring to. These are not allowed in the city of Sunbury. Okay? But the reason they don't allow them in Sunbury is because they create noxious, hazardous smoke, soot, fumes, odors, and air pollution, as detrimental to the citizen's health, and can deprive neighboring residents of enjoyment of their property or premises. Therefore, with the adoption of this article, is in intention of the city of the Sunbury Council meeting members to establish and impose restrictions upon the construction and operation of outdoor wood burning furnaces. I suppose this is not classified as wood burning, but it still is all the same hazards as a wood burning furnace. Now, why is it not illegal for that?
I've been getting a lot of complaints from different parts of the city for the same thing. It's just one of those things, you try and be nice in the beginning, and you tell them, as long as you don't build a big fire, and then you try and be nice, and you let them go, and right away, you know what happens? They, they take it too far, so now it's, we're just gonna have to.
You can't get a big fire in because of the fire box is only so big, but my concern.
They smoke.
Great. My concern isn't smoke, it's all people in the summer time, and this wood burning furnace is people using in the winter time basically to heat their homes. Maybe some people heat water with them, I don't know, but.
And also the fire department with false alarms, and just being able to early detect, they have further smoke in the neighborhood.
Other than that, sparks come out of the pipe. Can, I mean, when it strikes, it ignites something, but most of all, they light this fire, turn on music, and in a lot of cases, they leave, they get in the car and leave, and that's burning back there on a tenement. So I'm just asking, the council, do you consider maybe, how long?
I mean, if the way the ordinance reads now, it is, I mean, we were kind of bending it a little bit to the.
I understand that.
And we should probably just put it right back to the bottom of the letter.
Well, we did pass one thing not too long ago for the municipal authority, and maybe we need to revisit this again and look at it, because maybe that's where, while we used to roam outdoor burning, and we passed, you know, positively none of it. Because they're not heating anything with this, they're not heating the house or water or anything.
For whatever they said.
That pantry game looked like it was 50 feet from the house.
It's right next door.
Joe, I have a question, watch out.
Joe.
That doesn't really look like, I was thinking of.
Well, they're called chilimalas, it's just, everybody's buying them, and Joe was right, what we tried to do was tell them, listen, you can't have a big open flame. If your little kids wanna roast a hot dog, if you have, it's like you said, try to be nice, and then, you know, when we're not there, they put more wood and more wood.
Gee, that shows you.
Gee, tell them that.
That's a furnace.
I'll figure out.
This thing around. Well, it even has a screen in the front of the chimney, because I remember, I know that, you know, they're talking about, and I remember when Joe.
Well, the thing is around this carriage.
I remember, because Joe said, you have to have a chimney so hot, you must have a screen that covers it, and you cannot burn anything but tree lumber, you can't burn like pallets, you know, wood like that, and it has.